Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to announce that the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 PL 1975. At this time, I'll take the roll call. President Bonner?
Here.
Vice President Cologne?
Here.
Mr. Cho?
Here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Justice?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
And Ms. Primack.
Mr. President, meeting's yours.
All right. Thank you, Emilio. We have a couple presentations this evening, one on diversity, equity, and inclusion, which we're all very excited for, and then another one on state testing data presentation from Director of Education Jen McCann. And I'd like to tell you that our Director of Student Personnel Services will be presenting our diversity, equity, and inclusion presentation, Crystal Moore.
All right, we're up. Good evening. My name is Crystal Moore. I am Director of Student Personnel Services here in Summit, and we've scheduled some time this evening to share with you a community primer on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, in hopes of developing a common language around the district's D-E-I-N-B efforts and to provide a set of definitions around this important work. D-E-I-N-B is a foundational core of community building that supports our school district's mission. Our district mission states that the Summit Board of Education operates with a commitment to excellence and the expectation that each student will strive to excel beyond New Jersey's student learning standards, which set forth a minimum level of achievement for all students at all grade levels. The Summit Public Schools, in partnership with the community, will support and sustain an excellent system of learning that engages all students in compelling work, educates them to their highest intellectual, creative, and individual potential, and promotes pride and diversity, and results in responsible and productive citizens of the highest integrity. The first page of this primer provides definitions, working definitions, for the terms diversity, equity, inclusion, as well as belonging. These four terms are often heard together, however, they are not the same. The bottom half of the graphic provides some essential questions around each of these terms. Diversity asks, who is in the room and who is represented? Equity asks, who is trying to get into the room but can't? What students may need supports or interventions in order to access the curriculum? Inclusion asks, has everyone's ideas been heard? And have their voices been valued? And belonging asks, do people want to stay in the room? Do our students and our staff feel supported to be their authentic selves when they come to work and to school each and every day? All of this work in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is in the goal of educational equity. If you'll draw your attention to the bottom half of this page first, I've delineated the equality versus equity. Although these two terms are often in general conversation used interchangeably, they are not the same. Equality in education is achieved when students are treated the same or have access to similar resources. Equity, on the other hand, is achieved when all students receive the resources that they need at their level, at their time, so that they can graduate prepared for success after high school. In the top, in that blue box, you will see a definition of educational equity that was adapted from the Department of Education. It states that educational equity is the moral and civil rights obligation to ensure that students are provided the tools they need to succeed regardless of background, race, color, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, religion, nation of origin, native language, socioeconomic status, or any other discriminating factor. The goals of educational equity are here as well. Comparatively high achievement, equitable access and inclusion, equitable treatment of all students and staff, equitable opportunity to learn, equitable resource distribution, and school accountability. The final page of our primer is our focus on educational equity and a primer that was provided by the New Jersey School Board Association, and I think that the first sentence really sums up the spirit and the definition of educational equity. It seeks to provide opportunities and achieve excellent outcomes for all students by providing individual students with the supports they need to succeed, again, in line with Summit's school district's mission. And it is our hope that this primer will help us to engage in thoughtful discussion moving forward around our work in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And thank you, and I welcome any questions from the board. Ms. Miller?
Yeah. So first, I can't opt for a patch of people. A lot of work we're presenting here is very much of a committee visit. We've always driven, we've always tried. So, you know, I'm glad that we have a school. I've got, I do have two questions. First, your point varies in all, so in my opinion, belonging is free within four classes. Are we going to shift that, or is belonging, I can imagine that belonging really being intended for?
No, not at all. Certainly, students in education, specifically here in Summit, students are the center of absolutely everything that we do, and I appreciate that feedback, and I'll be happy to shift the language in belonging so that that effectively communicates that through the primer.
And I've got one other question. Actually, there's a few other questions that I've been getting about future unintended impacts. So, we put this out there, we believe that it has always been about this, and now it's in some way formalized, and we're going to have unintended consequences for us. For example, is there, is it within equity for students or groups or subjects to say that I'm not being treated with equity, but I do not have a same race, same steps, same religious background, same sexual orientation, etc.?
Sure. So, I appreciate that question, and I think that when we're doing this work and we're engaging in this work, that language is incredibly important, so I appreciate the chance to clarify that. When we talk about same, we're talking about equality. And so, and I think in referencing the resources that you're referring to, is that right? So, when we're talking about resources and equitable resources, we're talking about educational programs and services provided by Summit Public Schools that are embedded within what we do. We're talking about special services. English is a second language for English language learners. Our comprehensive basic skills program and learning workshop, our gifted and talented programs, as well as our advanced coursework and our AP classes. And with regard to staff or student placement, as it relates to any of the discriminating factors, right, that we talked about in the primer, that is absolutely, those factors are in no way dictate the placement of students or of staff in Summit Public Schools. Mm-hmm. Any other questions from the board? Yes, sir.
One of the, to Ms. Miller's point, a lot of the case has been in Summit Public Schools and have been in public schools decades.
Right.
And so with, and in all their organizations of the schools. But sometimes when, what happens is that when we formalize it, there's a, there's pushback or a common misperception that when we implement these programs, that somehow they mean that if we're going to provide something for a specific student specifically what they need, that somehow another student is going to lose. And there's a common misperception around this, that it's a zero-sum game.
Sure, sure. Right.
And that the resources get shifted from one student to another, or one group of students to another at the expense of others. Can you clarify that? And then, as a follow-up, can you give examples, you already kind of have, but can you give examples of where the district already provides things that students need, not necessarily everybody needs?
Sure. So, I'll move a different direction than responding to Ms. Miller's question. With regard to common misconceptions, a lot of time, resource allocation is at the forefront of our conversations when we're talking about equity. Resource allocation is a piece of educational equity. It's not educational equity in a whole, right? So, we're looking at, we're looking at student belonging, and we're looking at the culture of a building and the culture of an organization when we look at this work as well. And in addition to that, when we do delve a little bit more deeply into resource allocation, there are federal and state buckets of money that, when we go through our budget cycle, that are specifically prescribed, including our Title I and Title III budgets for students who are in need. So, that allocation of money is provided specifically for these students and is absolutely is not taking away from another student. I really like your reference to a zero-sum game, because that's not what equity is. Equity is providing the supports and the interventions when they're needed for both academic interventions for students who may be struggling, as well as enrichment opportunities for students who are striving, per our statement, above and beyond the curriculum. Does that speak to answer your question? And some of the things that we're doing with those Title I and Title III budgets that were referenced outside of Ms. Miller's question are before and after-school programs on our campuses that do receive Title I funds for students in need, and then additional services before and after-school tutoring and things of that nature for our ESL population. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
How much of what we're feeling is verified by the New Jersey State Education Guidelines respective to curriculum or the different policies in part like the Title I, Title II regulations, and by the allocation?
Everything that we do in Summit is going to be in line with those federal and state guidelines. Anything else?
First of all, I'm aware, um, so this, and as I'm looking through my follow-up ramp of education, foundation for this, as you were saying, where do you want to be? Question, which I would ask, to improve with that, according on the, kind of, we're really built from a foundation.
Right.
So, what are the action, then, to present, and also, I know this is a, this is a conversation with respect to goal of the district, right, so I have all the questions, that's interesting, with respect to goal of the foundation, but what are the, next step, how do you build on this foundation, and are there any very strong, and local elements?
Certainly. So, one of the things that is in line with our equity goal for this school year that we're going to do is we are going to conduct an equity audit, and we are going to look at teacher equity, programmatic equity, student and community perceptions, as well as achievement equity, and then we are going to use that to make an action plan, a strategic action plan, to make sure this is not a one-and-done piece. This work is iterative work, right? It's work that is going to continue to grow and support our students and support our community. And so, through that, and the development of an equity committee at the district level, we hope to take the data that we collect from that audit and create an action plan to continue working in service of providing equitable education equity for our students. Sure. Any other questions from the board? All right. Thank you all very much. Oh, oh, hi! See you there.
Can you clarify what you mean by teacher equity?
Sure, absolutely, I can clarify that. So, when we're looking at teacher equity within an audit, we're looking at the qualifications of instructors in classrooms, and so we're looking at years of experience, we're looking at certifications, and we're looking at the student groups that are being served to ensure that all of our students, our students that are in our AP courses, our students at a different campus, at different grade levels, and whatever student group it happens to be, have equitable access to quality teachers within the classroom. It's a great question.
Well, wouldn't that be, though, through the hiring process, that every person that applies for a position already in the school, do pay a lot of, you know, property taxes and have a strong school system?
Absolutely.
So, if the assumption is that all of the teachers are of high caliber already?
All of them are of high caliber, and that's a great point that you speak to, and so I would say yes. Some of them have master's degrees, some of them have doctoral degrees in their subject areas, so we're looking at the highest of the high caliber and making sure that, and asking, you know, who is teaching whom, right? And just ensuring that all of them are equitable, and then creating maybe questions around that.
Okay, and then I have one other question. So, what is the time frame that you're looking at for this?
So, the teacher certification will be the first piece, but we will be doing data collection throughout the 21-22 school year.
Can I ask you to follow up on the teacher equity portion of it? If you're looking at the qualifications, does that mean that it's not equitable if the AP Calculus teacher has a different qualification than the third-grade math teacher? Or is it, or is it the teacher qualifications can be different for different levels? Or is that?
They absolutely can be different for different levels. So, what we're looking at is just to get a picture of who our teachers are in our classroom and the students that they're serving, and so there may or there may not be any action associated with it, but it's an audit, kind of like we would do a budgetary audit, but it's just to, it's to account, to develop a big picture of what's happening within the classroom and just that teacher equity piece.
But if you find that it's not equitable that the AP Calculus students have a particular teacher, a particular qualification, versus the ninth-grade geometry students don't have one, how does that work? Do the teachers get reassigned? Do we hire a new teacher for the ninth-grade geometry, or how does that?
So, very good question. That's going to be part of the action plan that we create, so I can't speak to a specific, like, if-then situation. However, I will say that when we collect that data, then all of that data is going to be looked at, how, as a district, holistically, we're not looking at a specific teacher in a teacher classroom, we're looking at organizational practices and culture around placement of teachers and things of that nature. So, we're not looking to reassign teachers or anything like that, we're simply looking at the big picture of the district, and then how can we ensure all of our practices within our organization are equitable?
And we're not trying to kind of, sorry about the follow-up question, but we're not trying to go in the direction that Mayor de Blasio is in New York Public Schools, where they're trying to take away the gift of intelligence for them to create equity for all students, and so what?
Absolutely not.
Take from students that need it on the hiring car sector to give students below. I know you said we're not, no zero-sum game, and I'm with you on that.
Sure.
But I feel like a lot of the talk around equity tends to be leveling the playing field from the top down, like, just like driving the top down in order to bring the bottom up, rather than equality, which seems to bring the bottom up, just bring bottom up. So, I worry that the top of equity kind of competes those.
So, that's part of why I want to develop this common language and this framework around it, that we are not talking about equality and everyone getting the same thing, because just as a student who may be engaged in a basic skills workshop needs something different, a student that's taking AP Calculus also needs something different. And I appreciate the zero-sum, it's not one taking away from the other, it's making sure that everyone has what they need. And Summit Public Schools has a wonderful reputation as a high-achieving school district, and we will make sure that we maintain that integrity, and that's part of this. The work is not to change, it's to look. Sure. Yes, ma'am?
Could you speak to how best practices in early school, do you audit with the way you're about to be involved?
Oh, absolutely. So, there are several best practices around educational audits, there are several different silos or lenses to look at these audits through, and so the one that we have chosen, one of the things that we're working on at the cabinet level, is specifically, what does that look like for Summit, right? So, looking at the teacher equity piece, as well as the programmatic equity piece, as well as those student and community perceptions, are all best practice within the audit sphere. Does that answer your question? Ms. Justice, thank you.
What does program equity mean? Actually, I really struggle with the concept of what equity is in terms of when we apply it, like, we kind of throw it out there and it's like all sorts of stuff, but then the terms aren't quite defined, so it's hard to have that discussion about it. So, what's program equity?
So, I really appreciate that question. So, I think that in hearing the questions, what it sounds like would be beneficial, and you tell me if this would be beneficial for the community, is to put together, just as we've done with this primer, right, foundational, to put together a primer of what these specific equity pieces look like, and maybe something around the audit as a whole. Would that be something that would be helpful to post? Sure.
With a very concrete definition for a lot of these terms.
Sure.
And not justifying equity, but kind of, if we could kind of define it in terms of specifics, teacher equity, program equity, whatever equity we're talking about, that is super helpful.
And the different phases. Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
I appreciate that.
And I think equity in general, I think you walked in late, so when we look back to the first page, you have, you already have the general.
Right.
Specific, I don't think we talked about. Tell me, is this, is this presentation loaded somewhere that can find on the website?
This presentation is on the website, if you go to Student Personnel Services, then it's under diversity, equity, inclusion, it's a subset of that. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Dr. Benny Adams, if I understand it, you are laying out what and the how is going to be based upon what the audit shows you and the community in the?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Adams. That's correct.
And much of what happens with equity and gifted and talented and A P has so much to do with access and how that is determined, rather than taking anything away from anyone else. And I think if we were to look at Summit's history in education, who is in the AP and enrichment courses now, if the bell doesn't go off and says there's something wrong with this picture, then I think, you know, we have a lot of work to do in our community. And I can tell by the questions, we have a lot of education to do to get these concepts understood and the how, and the fact that all of our children, as the mission statement says, deserve that access to the best resources, best teachers, and the best outcome.
I appreciate your feedback.
So, that was part of the statement I suppose, that a question?
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate your feedback, Ms. Adams. All right, thank you all very much.
Come back. Good evening, everyone. Give me one second. I'm having a... There we go. Okay, everyone. Part of our state requirements is after we administer any type of state assessment, we are required to share out with the results to the community. Now, should we think back to last spring? We had sent out communications to the community that we were not going to be administering the NJSLA assessment for math, language arts, or for science, which is pretty much the achievement assessment that the state requires us to administer. However, the state did require us to administer two assessments in the spring, and one of those assessments was the Access for Ls assessment, and the other assessment was the DLM, the Dynamic Maps, Learning Maps assessment. Those two assessments are for specific subgroups of our populations within every school district in New Jersey. Access for Ls is administered to all kindergarten through grade 12 students who have been identified as English language learners, so basically our ESL population within the district. It's given annually in order to monitor the student's progress in learning academic English. It meets our federal guidelines for our ESSA grant, or ESA, ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, that is a federal requirement, and it's anchored to something called the WIDA English Language Development Standards, which assesses four different domains: listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Now, our results indicate, if you look at our graph, that our students' strength for this past administration is within listening, with a good percentage of our students performing in what the one category is of bridging and reteaching level for our reading category as well. Those who fall into this level demonstrate that they know and can use social and academic language while working with grade-level material. Although most of the students are not bridging or reteaching within speaking or writing domains, they were developing or expanding, which means that our students know and use social English language and some technical academic language. Now, they then take these four categories and they put them into a composite score. So, surprisingly, or not surprisingly, our students demonstrate a very strong strength in comprehension, and comprehension is 50% of the students' listening skills and 50% of the students' reading skills. They're also assessed on their oral language, which is 50% of listening and 50% speaking, literacy, which is 50% of their reading skills and 50% of their writing skills, and every student is given an overall score, oops, an overall score, which is 35% reading, 35% writing, 15% listening, and 15% of speaking. Now, you might be wondering why we don't break this down further into every building or every grade level, and the reason being is because we only have 134 students across the district that take this assessment. So, if we were breaking it down by building and/or grade level, you might be able to identify some of the students within the building, which is not allowed. So, we just share out to you as the community how we do as an overall district. However, from a district level at the central office and within our buildings with our principals, our ESL teachers, our supervisor of ESL, we do disaggregate the data and work towards identifying students who were in the entering and emerging stages and working on developing their skills, so that at the next administration, the following year, they can move over into a different category. The other assessment, as I mentioned, that we are required to administer is the Dynamic Learning Maps, and this assessment is given specifically to the most significant learning disability students, and there's three areas in which it's administered, which is English, mathematics, and science. These students would be the students who would not be taking the regular administration of NJSLA, math, ELA, or science. They are given a separate assessment based off of their disability. It is an online assessment, just like NJSLA, and there are four performance levels that they can score into, one being emerging, approaching the target, at target, and advanced. Within the area of ELA, 71% of our students were at target or advanced in this previous administration. In math, we had 48% of our students who met the target and/or were advanced, and in science, we had 43% of students who met their target. Again, small population of our students, only 31 students across the district took the math and/or ELA portion of this assessment, and seven students took science based off of their IEPs that drive which assessment. of their I E Ps that drive which assessment they take. So again, small population, hence why it's not broken down by grade level or by school. Does the board have any questions?
John, I have a question. I just have a comment.
Sure.
When the committee discussed the media, could you pull up this snapshot of where we are in the future here with each population? Because over the years, this data doesn't follow students through, it doesn't cut it in that manner.
Right.
And we have, we continue to ask, we always ask over the years, we'll go beyond what the state asks us to report, and we will have data on how many of our students, how are they seeing more students?
Yes.
How many of the ELA students? Because that to us is an indicator of how well we're providing their achievement, and we do get that data. It's just not represented here for us.
It's done through committee. Yeah. Ms... Go ahead.
I have a question. Can you just kind of figure out that at target is zero? Was it, because it doesn't have a category? Or was that?
So at target, right here, within the math, at 0%, it just means that in last school year, we had 0% of students who met the target. So the blue bars were our scores from 2018-19, which was the last administration of it. We skipped a year because of the pandemic, but we were required last year to do it. So in 2018-19, 0% of our students met the target and fell into the other three categories. Mr. Bonner?
Remember, you were asking, remember, I remember, I worked in the [inaudible] about the approximate timing when our English language learners can leave those programs and become higher at grade level with their figures and [inaudible] their figure levels and out there. [inaudible].
Right.
What grade is that?
So it all depend, so in a big picture, ballpark, big picture, it all would depend on the level in which they're coming into our program with. So we have students who enter our ESL classes who may come from a port-of-entry type of situation, where they come in with absolutely no English and sometimes very little education. So the time in which that type of population exits the program, it typically, in any given type of situation, it sometimes could take up to seven years for them to test out, depending on what level they're coming in with. If we have students who are coming from overseas in some type of European country where their parents are already speaking some type of English, they test out much quicker, so they may take only two or three years, or in some cases, we have students who are only in the program for one year. So it's really differentiated based off of their foundational skills when they enter our program. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Good to see the sun today. I can't remember the last time we had seen the sun before today. So I was feeling it. So good to see that. Welcome. Happy, happy fall, as those of us who are in the teaching business call it, happy Dark October. This is, this is the time when school teaching gets real and the shine is off the penny with regards to the start of the school year, and we face several months ahead of us until the next big break. So thank you to all of our teachers who are working hard in Darktober to keep our kids going and on track. So in keeping with my theme of telling you all about good stuff that goes on in the district, I've got a couple of good ones tonight that are probably our best ones yet. Something you may not know, in September of 2020, of the 2020-2021 school year, the district partnered full-time with the newly renovated Summit Community Center to provide off-campus instructional space for our 18- to 21-year-old student program. Some of you may not even have known we had a program like that, but we do. The community center has a beautiful and brand-new full kitchen and laundry room where students can practice functional, practice functional daily living skills. The community center also provided several employment opportunities for our students, even during the pandemic, where we know worksite dynamics has been a serious issue with regards to COVID-19. Not every district in New Jersey, or in the country for that matter, has had that, has had that kind of access and that kind of support from their community. Moving forward, there will be ongoing opportunities for students to interact with different members of our community as students that work, as students will work at the Summit Pool or the Summit Golf Course. Our students are also able to do community service by partnering with Grace's Pantry and the Salvation Army. The Summit Community Center has also provided space to build a community garden that will be expanded into a greenhouse soon. And as a board, we tried a greenhouse like several years ago, and that failed, so good for the kids for, for having a plan and then following through with it. Of note, two of our students who graduated last year have reached significant milestones. One moved on to, one moved onto a college campus, and the other obtained full employment with Pomtonian, which happens to be our food service company, because of the skills he obtained while in the program. Good stuff and a great example of the intersection of school and community and a perfect example of educational equity. Additionally, I want to recognize our dedicated group of custodians and technicians, led by our future Director of Facilities, Michael Martino, and our outgoing Director of Facilities, Angelo Palumbo, for their tireless work to make sure our schools were able to open as quickly as possible after tropical storm Ida. Specifically, I want to call out the work of Nick Deluca, did I say that right? Deluca and Adam Pilich. Nick literally stayed overnight to monitor systems at Washington, and Adam stayed overnight at Brayton, which I'm super proud of because it reminds me of my army days when I used to stand the watch and stay overnight for all sorts of random reasons that I wasn't sure why, but I'm quite sure these gentlemen knew what they were doing and why they were staying there. Their work and dedication to the district allowed Summit to only miss one day because of the storm, which is way better than many districts around us fare. So congratulations and kudos to them. While the district has not fully recovered from the damage, the dedicated efforts of our facilities team enabled students to stay in school and only miss that one day. So thank you so much to them. They are right next to teachers and the most absolutely underappreciated people in our society, and we should all be grateful and thankful for their efforts. So that is all the good news I have for the night. I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, President Bonner. Well said. We all echo your sentiment with regards to how we rallied together over the flood and really mitigated the damage and loss of instructional time. So that was great. Thank you. Good evening, and happy to report that we continue to have a very, very strong opening to the school year. What a difference a year makes, I will say. The staff, the students, the families, everybody's so engaged. The full day of instruction with lunch, recess, is really, really, really nice to get back to. And by all reports, everything is going very, very well. We still have a few outdoor activities, like sometimes eating lunch outdoors when we can or playing musical instruments outside. Just, that just makes us much safer and a better environment because we are still dealing with the pandemic and, and the environment. So I'd like, just like to thank the administrators, the board, the teachers, custodians, support staff, and of course, the parents for remaining flexible as we're still following some COVID protocols to keep our schools open, keep our kids safe. One last update on COVID-related, we have approximately 93% of our staff that are vaccinated, and that's a very impressive number. That's, that's very comforting to hear, and in large part, that's probably contributing greatly to the, to the safety of our school communities. So we're happy to hear that. As per state guidelines, if you're a staff member who is not vaccinated, must get tested regularly every week. And we've put some systems in place to support that, and those weekly testing programs are already underway, and they'll continue until further notice. I'm happy to report that we've had several PTO events take place throughout the district. It's great to see that we have positive feedback from our students engaging with their peers in these settings and socializing. We look forward to continuing to make these events possible because we know how much our students benefit from them. I thank the PTOs and all their work that they have put forth this year to meet with the administration to make any modifications or changes that they may have to so that we can continue to reintroduce these events as we move through this school year. And at this time, I'd like to share with the board some school highlights so far this year. Starting tomorrow night, the high school will be having its annual high school cabaret event that will take place at Village on the Green, 7 p.m. We will have 36 student performances tomorrow evening, and tickets can be purchased at the door. So they're outside practicing right now as we speak for tomorrow's event. At Washington Elementary, Elementary School, ESL students and Spanish teachers made a fantastic interactive Hispanic Heritage slideshow, which kids are enjoying as they learn about the different Hispanic cultures and artists. And continuing with Hispanic Heritage Month, our communications office partnered with the advisor and students in the, in the Union Hispanic Club at the high school to do weekly Instagram takeovers, takeover posts to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. The club had the complete creativity and freedom to post visuals and information that raise awareness and celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Some of those posts included books from Hispanic authors, movie recommendations, Latino-owned businesses in Summit, and some facts about the club at the high school. At the primary centers, kindergarten Chromebooks have arrived. Students have been learning how to take care of their devices, and they've been practicing logging in and independently working on platforms such as Raz Kids and Google Classroom. Some of our young scholars have even created digital self-portraits, so we're really lucky to have these devices to supplement and support the incredible instruction they're receiving on a daily basis. Over at Lincoln Hubbard School, they celebrated their first student and staff outdoor playdate on October 1st, and this is the first time they have done that activity in almost two years. Playdates occur the last Friday of each month. All instruction is shut down for the last period of the day so that teachers and students can simply spend time together playing, connecting, dancing, and building school spirit. And continuing with Lincoln Hubbard, Lincoln Hubbard Pillars of Pride kicked off during the Week of Respect. Pillars of Pride is the school's best, is a character-based education initiative. A surprise pillar of character is announced and will become the focus for the coming weeks with building goals, student letters, and emails for recognition of each other. The school mascot Rory revealed all the new pillar, the new pillar, which is respect with our school counselor, Ms. Dorsey. And finally, at LCJ Middle School, sixth graders conducted an iPad drop this week. It's an interdisciplinary activity between science, math, and language arts. Students build an iPad case with recycled materials and science. They then market their case in their English language arts class, and then in their math class, they take measurements, conduct calculations to measure the, the damage shown on the trials. They do not use a real iPad when they drop to test the case that they build. They use a bag of pretzels inside, and if the pretzels remain intact, then they assume the iPad would as well. So that's an excellent activity. It's an excellent interactive interdisciplinary STEM activity that the middle school is engaged in right now. And that's all that I have. Your honor.
Okay. Get back to the agenda here. All right. So I need a motion to approve the superintendent's report, A through C, which includes two reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Can I get a motion?
Come on.
On the roll, Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Committee reports.
I'm ready.
So are you ready? But I have, I have a kudo for you. Can I do it before you go?
You want to give me a kudo?
The whole group of you. She'll wait.
I'll wait as long as you like.
So I, you know, you only get to be president once, and you're not, you're not a committee chair typically, and so I had an observation last week that I want to share with everybody. Because, because all the work of the board gets done on committees, I was struck by how like intelligent the report, the readouts were last week and how much stuff gets done in those, you know, in your case, 18 hours, in your case, you know, just a few, in our case, you know, 18 minutes. But I'm being, I'm joking here, but just, just so you all know, like, that's where the magic happens on, on this board particularly, and I'm, I'm really proud to be the president with this group of chairs. They really take their jobs like super seriously, that your reports are super thorough and very informative to the public. I think you all are great citizens, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing this year for the schools. It's an honor to be your president. So I, I've read through them that are coming to you tonight, and there's just a lot of good things happening in the district, and I appreciate you all. So let's go to the Education Committee, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. The Education Committee met on October 7th at 3 p.m. We met, it was a short one this time. It was just a little bit over an hour. My glasses are fogging up. Hold on.
Nope.
Oh, gosh. Someone told me to tape them, but it's like, how much humility, and I mean, how, where's my dignity? In attendance were Superintendent Huff, Jen McCann, the Director of Curriculum, Crystal Marr, Director of Student Personnel Services, Jan Cho, and Wilita Justice. We have three discussion items, too, which we've already dispensed with. We did talk about the state assessment data report and asked all the questions that we needed to there that has been presented to the public, so I, I will not discuss it any further unless the board has further questions on it. We also spoke at length about the educational equity document that was shared this evening, asking a lot of questions also that brought that, that document to preparedness for today. We did that piggybacking off of the Communications Committee, which also gave it a strong review, and that is on our website, I believe. So I will not go into that unless anybody has any other questions. Our last subject was the calendar, school calendars. We reviewed the proposed calendars for 2022 and 2023. So those, that's two school cycles. And as always, every year that calendars are put together, a fresh look is taken. So it's never like, this is always how we've done it, so this is how we're going to do it. They look at so many variables, I'm not even certain how the calendar can, quite frankly, get put together. Both calendars provide 180 days for our students, 184 for staff, and these two calendars fit in what our district has come to understand as our typical vacation. So there's no real changes in, in vacation times or timing, although we are open to discussing differences in our vacation placement and timing absolutely in the future, as is our And in these two calendars, students will start after Labor Day. I believe the last two school years, due to the way Labor Day fell, we started before Labor Day. Now we will start after, holding of course, you know, the right to, should it, should it be needed, we'd go back to before Labor Day as well. Next two years, that is not going to happen. The committee did not find any issues with the, with the calendars and will recommend them for adoption this evening. Anything that I missed? Jan, Wilita?
No.
No color commentary?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions? All right, so we have that one recommendation. You'll see it in Ops. I think it's B and C. You'll see it in Ops, I think it's B and C, and we'll meet next on October, no, I'm sorry, November fourth at three PM.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Miller. Operations. Gentlemen to Miller.
Thank you, President Bonner. Okay. The Operations Committee met on October fifth. The meeting was just over an hour, so efficient meeting for us. And in attendance, board members Melanie Cohen, Jan Cho, and myself. On the administration, Lou Pepe, Emilio Torres, Angelo Palumbo, Michael Martino, and Superintendent Huff. And I would also, as before I jump into the, the minutes, congratulate Mr. Martino on his pending role as the new director of facilities. That is a well-earned role, based on his work here in the maintenance group. So, so that is fully supported by the Operations Committee, that transition. We discussed two, two primary items. First, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget process. The committee reviewed the, the goals and the timeline for that process, which is, is about to kick off. The, the pending process is consistent with past years in terms of the timing as well as the goals, and the goals themselves are well-aligned with, with the overarching district objectives of maintaining and enhancing educational excellence while exhibiting fiscal discipline and prudence. So, that is a, in a nutshell, what the goals are saying, which we fully support. Facilities was the second major topic of the meeting and we covered a lot of ground with respect to facilities. One item which was touched upon, Hurricane Ida. The, the damage from Ida was in a few places throughout the district, but one educationally impacting damage occurred in Brayton. And so, as I think you now know, there are a few classrooms that are, that are unavailable for use due to damage from the hurricane. The, the good news, well, let me start with the bad news. The bad news is that those classrooms, we don't expect those classrooms to be available for several more weeks. So, I think the end of the month or early November, unless there's a different update on that from when the committee met. So, so they're still a few weeks away. The good news is with respect to the, the funding of the costs of the reparation work, which will be covered by our insurance policies and/or FEMA funds. We were also updated on, speaking of areas that have been out of pocket for students, the Lawton C. Johnson Middle School Auditorium. That is a different timeline and actually may be up and running now. Is it?
All testing has been completed and safe for return. We're utilizing it.
Okay.
Beginning this week and more, more so Monday.
Yep. All right. So, by Monday, that should be fully utilized and, and back up and running. So, that's, that's good news. The, the costs of the remediation of the mold that was found there. We are currently in discussions, we being the district administration, in discussions with the insurer with respect to funding of those expenses for the remediation work. And so TBD there. Another, another item in the facility space, damage to Brayton. The facade, the exterior facade of Brayton, which I believe we've reported on previously, is that damage is being repaired. And there's a second item where, well, this is a different item in the weight room. We are in the process of completing the, the weight room upgrade in the high school. And I mentioned those two items together because they're, the committee is recommending that, that maintenance reserve funds be utilized to, to fix the Brayton facade as well as to complete the weight room work, and, and I'll give you those amounts momentarily. The, the last item that we talked about was upgrading the middle school field area. And so, this is a topic that's come up over the years and there was an upgrade to that area last year, which was the fencing, if anyone has noticed, the fencing around that, that field, which was a safety measure that was implemented. We're now discussing upgrading the fields themselves as well as the track that's around the field. And so, there is a survey that's being put together to determine exactly what can be done to optimize the space on that field. There is a preliminary plan that has been put together, but it really can't be finalized until the survey is completed. So, so that work is in progress and it's worth noting that there, there are many benefits to upgrading that field, and I'll mention a few in terms of curriculars or curriculars, the FISED program, the field hockey team, softball, track and field, et cetera. So, this really is intended to be beneficial to, to our students in the middle school, so meaningfully beneficial. And, and my last note on this is just a thank you to the PTOs of the district and to the volunteers and the donors of, of our PTOs because they are contributing to the funding of the weight room in the high school as well as the field, the upgrade that will take place in the middle school. And so, thank you to those PTOs for, for the work that they do, which is similar to ours in terms of volunteer work. So, thank you. The, the amounts that I had mentioned earlier with respect to maintenance reserve for the facade, Brayton facade, sixty-seven thousand four hundred, and completion of the weight room, weight room is, is five thousand dollars. So, the total amount that the committee is recommending to withdraw from maintenance reserve is seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars. Our next meeting is November third. Actually, I think we may be moving it to November first, so November first at four-thirty PM. Okay. Lot of facility stuff I covered there. Anything I missed?
I may have zoned out when you may have said it, but vast majority of the expense is being covered by insurance with regards to Hurricane Ida repairs, right?
It, for Hurricane Ida, absolutely, everything. For mold, that's still, for, for the mold in the middle school, that is a discussion with the insurer.
God, how many, are the kids real displaced in Brayton?
There are four classrooms that are relocated, but luckily, we have this space that we could repurpose. It does call for some of the specials to be on cards. So, I give a lot of credit. They've been really keeping a normal school day over there at Brayton while they're a little bit displaced. But like Mr. Cologne said, hopefully just a few more weeks into next month, we'll be back to normal.
I, I just want to make sure. I didn't, am, am I correct if there's no recommendation money for middle school bills at this point?
No. So, I, I, yeah, I should make that clear. So, there is no, there is no formal proposal that is either with the board or for approval or to the Ops Committee yet. Quite frankly, it was conceptual was the discussion, and, and so the survey needs to be completed and then there's going to be another iteration of finalizing a proposal to the committee and then to the board, which would include costs.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Cologne? Fantastic. Mr. Cho, policy.
Policy Committee. The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, October sixth. In attendance, along with myself, our fellow board members, Michael Cologne and Melanie Cohen, and then from the district, Superintendent Scott Huff, Rob Cordella, and Kathleen Murphy. Do have a number of policies, the revisions and some new policies. I'll try to be highlight and, you know, just note relevant points. I do want to remind everybody that all the policies and regulations that govern the operations of the district are on the district website under the board tab. So, to extend the policy number I referenced, if you want to see the exact reading or have trouble falling asleep, help yourself on the website. So, to start, policy two-four-six-seven, third group parents and resource family parents. The minor revision that addresses a change in terminology from a foster parent to a resource foster parent, and the policy itself is just a responsibility of the district to make sure that a parent, I'm sorry, a student that's in somewhat of a transitional guardian parent situation and that the student has adequate representation for their rights with respect to their education. Policy five-one-one-one references eligible resident and non-resident students. Just add some language around a criteria for when students, because of a transitional home situation, may end up being out of the district, living in a shelter, for example, the responsibility of the district to continue providing the education for up to one year, and to the extent that continues, the state will take the fiscal responsibility for providing the education. So, again, certain situations, again, primarily with homeless, parents moving in a shelter out of the district, the students are allowed to continue being educated in our district. Policy number five-one-one-four, children displaced by domestic violence. That policy is being abolished because the situation is covered by the prior policy I referenced, five-one-one-one. Another policy in a similar area, policy five-one-one-six, education of homeless children. That is primarily a reporting responsibility of the district to notify the appropriate state agency should a child in our district become homeless and end up in some type of transitional living situation. Policy and regulations, seven-four-three-two, eye protection, just an update in terms of the situations within educational or extracurricular setting where both the students and staff are required to be provided and used appropriate eye protection for their safety. Policy eight-four-twenty, emergency and crisis situation revised, just an update on the district requirements for school safety requirements, drills, fire drills, school safety drills conducted in the classrooms, and the government guidelines, which should be referenced. Subset of that, regulation eighty-four-twenty-point-one, fire and fire drills, again, just an update on the policy of the regulation for conducting fire drills and coordinating with the local fire department. Now, the policy eighty-five-forty, school and nutrition programs, simply is an update for the state requirements of a district in terms of which situations or circumstances they would provide for eligible students, breakfast even after the bell, not just before school starts. Another policy related to the food service side, policy eighty-five-fifty, meal charges, outstanding food service bill, potentially a policy revision for students that are arrears in their cafeteria bill and how the school, the steps the school should take to addressing that and ensuring that the student is continued to be able to have food during the school day while the, the school district is contacting the appropriate guardians and such to address the matter, make sure that a child does not feel hungry during the school day. Revision in policy two-two-seven-zero, religion in the schools, it's an update to reflect the latest U.S. Department of Education guidance on constitutionally protected prayer and religious expression in public elementary and secondary schools that was issued in January twenty-twenty. And then related to that, policy eighty-eight-ten, religious holidays is being abolished because those items, religious holidays is covered in the prior policy, which has been amended. And then there's four policies, they'll sort of group together or that are related to the Federal Awards Care Act, you know, the COVID, the SSR and the COVID-related type of funding for schools and the internal controls and such for the administration of those funds. Those policies, six-one-one-five-point-zero-one, point-zero-two, and point-zero-three, and basically it's just a policy requires the school districts to follow certain guidelines around eligibility of who the vendors can be, of reporting and such, and making sure this appropriate screening, that all the vendors and subcontractors are not on some type of a federal, like potentially do not use type of list. And also addressing the school board and district employees with respect to any potential conflict of interest and disclosures and such related to awarding of contracts. And then also related as policy six-three-one-one, which is the actual, where the board and district has to refer to a federal system for award and management that actually is a database for disbarred, suspended vendors or contracts on any type of goods or services through school systems. So, that is it for all the policy revisions and adoptions. So, the committee recommendations are first reading of the policy revisions or new policies that I just went through, and then a final reading and abolishing of a couple of policies that are being eliminated, and then the second reading of the policies from the prior month's agenda. All right. Any questions from the board or my fellow policy committee members? All right. And our next meeting will be next month, November, potentially Monday, November first or maybe November third, Wednesday, to be determined. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cho. Got to be close to a record, number of policies addressed in one board meeting, or at least top five probably, so. The rest of the policies is fascinating. Well, well done. And there's a lot more to come, right? From what I understand, so. Lot of changes, lot of updates, lot of abolishments, lot of verbiage changes, all those things for the most part. But thank you to the policy committee for staying up with all of that, and thank you to Rob as well for keeping it all in line. Next, we go down to Ms. Primack, Communications.
Thank you. I actually think it's very helpful and interesting to talk about. So, we met September thirtieth, were fifty-five, and Mrs. Bonner, not eight, and, and myself, Bonner, and the calendar, and the board, and it was a wonderful session. Oh, sorry, I was, nothing quite, I'm going to borrow Melanie. So, it, all my tech is sort of not working today, which, that's okay. It happens. So, we first look at, we do a post-implementation review of projects and then we move on to current projects. There's a lot of crossover because some of the post-implementation review are actually now ongoing. So, they kind of fall into both buckets now, which is, I think, wonderful. Some, for example, the parent newsletter has been launched, keeping families updated about what's new in the district. For those who follow social media, you see them in sort of snippets, but we actually, based on survey, have many parents who do not follow social media. So, some of that information's kind of gathered together and collated, sent out with a video component, trying to reach again as many people, as many families as we can. So, the first one went out, congratulations, and a great success, and we look forward to the follow-up. Also, that's something that's been in the works is really what it means to be a summit teacher, a staff member. It's not going to be limited to teachers, what it means to work in this district. I think it's a wonderful feature. The principals have sort of stepped into their role to share their thoughts and suggestions of different titles and personnel who can contribute to this great project. I think it's, it'll be so wonderful, just not only for people outside of Summit who may think about coming here as, as a staff member, but for our community to really see all the wonderful people and the wonderful different roles making this a premier place to work, which also then, of course, directly contributes to it being a premier place to go to school. So, that was very exciting. The post-implementation, we did talk about the DEI visual, which is on the Student Personnel Services page of the website, obviously presented tonight and ref discussed very, far more eloquently than I will by Mrs. Miller. But again, I think an excellent, an excellent shared understanding. And let's see. We had talked last time though about you, curriculum, the new curriculum, which is always available on the website, just in case anyone wants to know. The full curriculum is available on the Summit website to, if you ever have any questions about what's being taught in, you know, your child's classroom, it's all there. There had been a discussion in our prior meeting about whether or not to do a video highlight, but that is, is tabled a little bit, but it'll be interesting to, again, looking at different ways, different media, different platforms to, to share information. We're very pleased, the committee was very pleased with the outcomes of the projects and the pace at which some of these initiatives are taking place. So, we've already mentioned some of the, the current projects. In addition, there was looking, Mrs. Babas and Ms. Kaplan from Guidance planned some SEL videos to provide support and resources to students and parents, really envisioned a bit as a practical skill snippet on self-management and helping students. Self-management was a topic we were talking about before pandemic. I think it got additional focus and highlight understandably, but I think it'll be great to again, use these various platforms to help support our families and our students. Mention was made of addition of COVID testing opportunities, emails have been going out. We have a wonderful section of the website under our resources tab. It's the COVID dashboard and information. It's not limited to the dashboard, lots of information, all COVID-related. So, I do hope, you know, everyone will be utilizing that and to take advantage of testing opportunities. It also includes what you, what information you need to bring and what may or may not be covered. So, we moved on to communications surrounding the, the appointment of our impending appointment of Business Administration. of business administrator. And so we just took a look at various history and ways to, effective ways to share the wonderful news with all the stakeholders. It was a very thoughtful, comprehensive dialogue. And following the meeting, we received a wonderful formal communications plan, and I know the communications have gone out and they look terrific, and I think really reflect the thoroughness, Superintendent Huff, that you and the entire team brought to the process. So thank you. We also discussed the emergency, see, half of what we discussed, you've already seen, you've already gotten the letters by the time I get here, but that's a good thing. Emergency closing letter, I think the big takeaway in our discussion was really, you know, new rules with regard to inclement weather and remote instruction, that it's no longer an option, right? So again, just trying to, again, and just been, we mentioned, I think our takeaway was just we might need to reinforce, you know, things change, still an ever-changing landscape of what we can and cannot do, and I think we, you know, much like the calendar discussion, sometimes when something's happened in the past, we sort of think that that will be the future, but it's not. So thank you for the letter that makes clear that, you know, how remote, that remote instruction's not an option, and how the school closings will work. To that end, our community buzz section, which we wrap up with, actually had to do with lots of people were asking for the calendar, which, again, you had indicated was, was going to be, going to the education committee and, you know, if recommended to the full board, which, of course, here we are. So much of what I have to share is stuff you're already seeing and doing. So it's been great, it's really lovely, I think it's wonderful, I think it's very innovative using a lot of different ways to reach people and just trying to keep those lines of, of shared information open. Anything from the committee? Any questions from the board? Great, thank you so much.
Chris, I don't have a question, but I forgot to ask a question, and when we brought up the calendar, my memory was jogged. I got a question, and I promised that I would ask it, about the calendar, and we've had this question before. It has to do with the placement of professional development days, and, you know, why the days are chosen as they are, and if you could just address that to the.
And if I may offer just one bit of history before you would address it, Superintendent Huff, if I recall, and when I, when, when my oldest started in the district not that many years ago in the grand scheme of life, they were Wednesday, and they were half-days on Wednesday. And I know that changed in recent years, so with that, I would.
That's exactly what I was going to comment about, historical context, that the professional half-days were typically scheduled on Wednesdays, which seemed to be a hardship or inconvenience for families. So the ask back then was to move it to a Monday, which they currently are now. So there is some conversation now that people take a look at some Fridays as well. So we are listening to that, and we'll do some more work on that for future calendars to see if that's a viable option as well. But right now, they were already moved upon historical context from when they were on Wednesdays.
Thank you. I didn't want to get home and get a phone call that I forgot to ask the question. Thank you.
Okay, from negotiations, the only thing I have to report is that we will meet with the principals on the 19th of this month to discuss and review their pending contract updates. And that's that from negotiations. Liaison reports, did anyone liaise in the past month?
I did.
We have a liaison the end.
I attended the Union County School Board Association Hybrid Meeting on October the 13th. At the meeting, we, they discussed the workshop conference online, that's coming up, October 26th through the 28th. And then a presentation was made by Mary Ann McGann, who's the Coordinator of School and Community Relations of Westfield School District, on communicating during challenging times. And I'm happy to report that Summit School District is doing all of the best practices that were recommended, so kudos to the administration and the communications committee. It reinforced to me how well we've been operating and communicating during the pandemic.
Again, I liaised with SEF in September, and it was a great meeting, a wonderful meeting, a lot of, they had some presentations that, you know, I won't, that were not directly connected to the grants process, but excited for the grant season. There was a focused conversation. I do know Superintendent Huff, you, you had met with some of the leadership at SEF and discussed some sort of, some, you know, perhaps going off-cycle with a couple of superintendent-focused, sort of bigger-picture grants to support larger initiatives. So they, you know, they discussed that because I think it's a, it's a, it's a great way to stay current with the needs of the district, and so I will look forward to hearing from you and SEF on, on some of those collaborations.
Anyone liaise to my left? No. All right. Moving on. Okay. Let's see, where are we? All right, public comment. I'm going to, we're ahead of schedule, which I love. I'm going to channel my inner Donna Miller and do a little board governance education right now, so sit back, get ready, we're going to educate. So in September, I got a question from a citizen, and I thought it was a great question, and I'm going to address it here tonight before we start the public comment portion of our meeting, and essentially it's this, I'm going to mostly read it verbatim. But it says, "I've attended a couple BOE meetings, and one of the things that stand out, stands out, is how parents and others have only a one-way communication channel to the BOE members. They stand up and make personal statements about issues that are deeply important to them, and the BOE members simply sit there and look back at them in silence. I'm sure there's a reason for this process, but I'm starting to understand why. Can you please clarify why this is the case?" So I'm here to do that tonight publicly for everyone. So essentially, I understand that sentiment, and we all understand that sentiment, and it is quite awkward and can be cold and callous to us too, those of us who are also humans who sit on the other end of the microphone. But public comment is just that, is a time for members of the community to publicly comment on issues before the district. It's not Congress, it's not a hearing, it's not perhaps something you might see at the city council, or perhaps in the state legislature, it's different. Boards use the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate the issues, or enter into a question-and-answer session, or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Please understand that not all issues brought before the board in any given evening will be resolved that evening. If warranted, I, as the president of the board, will engage in conversations with Superintendent Huff on any issues brought before the board at a later date, or the issue will be taken up in the appropriate committee and reported out at a board meeting. If appropriate, a member of the district will address the concern with the individual on a personal level. We prefer the latter, as we do not, nor should we, as a board, engage ourselves in the operational, day-to-day running of the district. So before we get to public comment, I just want to say, there are many, many methods and many modes to communicate with the district. Probably one of the most efficient and effective and most important is to communicate with your classroom teacher. As a board and as a district's leadership, that's what we prefer on most issues that can be handled at that level. And then you go simply up the chain after that, the principal, superintendent, perhaps somebody on the superintendent's staff that can address that appropriately. And of course, the board is always available for questions, and of course, then there's the public comment session. Please know that sometimes when we get emails, we will typically share those with Superintendent Huff or his cabinet, so they have visibility of those. And any email I get, or any email that the board gets, we then share with everybody on the board, so everybody has visibility of it. Now, we are, we are legally bound by law to not respond or engage in that conversation, because then we're taking action without the public's knowledge and not in an open forward. So that also can feel sometimes a little bit cold, that like many members of the, of the board did not respond to that email. We're obligated by law to not have that discussion at that time. But please know, anything that comes before the district, we all know, and then most of that either gets resolved in committee with regards to, maybe it's a policy issue, or it's a communications, or an operational issue, or probably 99 times out of 100, it gets turned over to Superintendent Huff, he takes that feedback, considers it, and then we'll take it from there. Many times, we will engage with you individually, if you email us individually, and we will respond, but almost invariably, we will refer you back to someone on the district, specifically if it's an operational issue, and everybody in the district is available to parents and members of the community regardless of their status in the district. So that's just a little bit of primer of how that works. We will respond, we do listen, and we do care about what you have to say, but there is a process, and it is relatively formal with regards to board governance. At the end of the day, we have, we have a three-fold job. That's to hire and evaluate the superintendent, contribute to and approve district policy, and then governance, so essentially voting for financial, operational, personal, and under other agenda items. After that, we leave it to the experts. So that's where we're at. Let's get going. Mr. Secretary, will you read the ground rules of the public comment portion?
Yes. Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at the center and state your name and address in a clear audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the board as a whole and not an individual member of the board. Unless additional time is granted by the board president, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
All right, now that we're all clear on how this works, let's go for public comment for items on the agenda. Anything we've discussed so far, or will discuss tonight, please feel free to take the mic and comment away. This is the part where people typically don't come. All right. There's a disproportionate amount of people on the next one that end up commenting, right? Last chance on that one. All righty, let's move on to public comment, items not on the agenda. Please just raise your hand, and I'll point to you, you can head on up to the mic. Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Grenon, 58, Druid Hill Road.
Get that right up for you at the bottom.
That's right, you can hear it, right?
You can pull it off.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
It's good. It's good. Well, first of all, this is my first board meeting for the Board of Ed, so well done. We, for, on behalf of my husband and I, we just want to thank the superintendent, the board, for your support for the athletics and for the drama club in the last year and a half. I think without it, our kids would have been like stir-crazy, you know, so well done, because I know it wasn't easy, and it was really important for the kids. One of the things that has come to attention that we wanted to ask your consideration for is around the mask-wearing policy on stage for the productions, and if anybody, and the reason I bring up sports is because when I think about our sophomore who played ice hockey and soccer and lacrosse last year, and I think about our senior, Donald, if anybody saw him in production, I mean, the drama club, whether it's in a true play or if it's in a musical, is truly an athletic accomplishment. And for anyone that's stood on a stage and performed, it's hot, the adrenaline's high, and you operate at a really intense level. So what we're asking is for consideration around Romeo and Juliet, and then going forward, we can talk about the musical, about not having to wear the masks while they're performing, and to consider them very similarly that you would in athlete. Because I look at both of my kids in the same way and what they're able to accomplish, and truly, if you've never stood on a stage, I encourage you to go do it, it's hot. And when we had real heat waves in the beginning of the year, and kids had to take their masks off, you know, we allowed them to do that because you overheat. So Don's been working on the crew, you know, we've all sat, I mean, we've all been on stage under those lights, it's just, it's really, it is draining and taxing on the actors. So that's just something to consider, we'd ask that you think about it. There are some precedents we're aware of in other superintendents in school districts, so Chatham, Watchon Hills, Bridgewater, have all accepted that the stage is a court and that the actors are also athletes. So as you think about this, we have a handful of weeks before we go on, you know, Romeo would, Juliet would love to show their smiles on their faces. I don't know how many of them, you talk about the teachers and vaccinations, I know a lot of the students are vaccinated, we did it for the musical, we made sure they got vaccinated so that they could perform. I don't know if that helps or gives comfort, or there's a way you can survey that, but, you know, I think whatever policies the state sets, there's obviously some precedent for, for navigating around that, and we'd ask for some consideration. Do you have anything on that?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa DeBries, I live on Maple Street. I just have a, more of a question that maybe could be addressed at the next Board of Ed meeting. We know the FDA is reviewing the vaccine for children five and older, and I just wanted to get a sense, and I'm sure others would be interested to know if that's a Board of Ed decision, if it's a superintendent, a governor, like, how would that be decided when it comes to our children? And I just have some concerns about anything being forced onto a five- or six-year-old. So if you have any chance, I think they were saying they are expecting approval in November, so that's right around the corner, I think it would be a nice topic to address at the next meeting.
Just to clarify your question, your question is actually, is it will the board or the district mandate vaccines? Is that the question?
And is it a board decision? Is it a Department of Health decision? Is it a governor? Like, I'm not sure where the decision, who makes that decision?
Thank you. Any others? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Melinda Fleisner, I'm on Maple Street, or no, I'm on Oakland Place in Summit. Been there for a long time. And I know we're all very familiar, because we've spoken, we've emailed, I've sat in your office, we've had a lot of discussions about all of this. Couple of things, back to the masks and the mandates and the vaccinations and all the other quarantines. I know that masks are mandated by the governor, so we don't have any leeway to eliminate masks for our students, including our little ones. But the length of the quarantines, as you know, my son was quarantined the very first day of middle school for being slightly under three feet away from a COVID-positive student. The quarantine was 14 days, which is a really long quarantine, and the quarantine length itself is not mandated by the governor. So I know that we're in the orange zone, that includes a lot of places down, we all know this, we all know the zone that we're in. But our neighbors, our very neighbors that we play sports against, that we play, have played it with, are not. They, and so they have seven-day quarantines with a five-day test-out option. So as it's not mandated by the state, the boards, the mayors, we have a lot of leeway to walk up to that line, and so I'm urging you guys to consider, I'm sure you've considered it before, but to consider again, decreasing the length of the quarantine. Additionally, while the students are quarantined, they're not allowed to take tests, which happened, again, as you know, to my, you know, second-day sixth grader. It's going to become more of a problem as we get towards midterms and finals, and I know you've thought through this, and I know it's partly the cheating issue, I know there's a lot of issues that have gone into the decision-making, but I urge you to consider it again, to see if there's something else that we can do for some of these students. 14 days, if you're supposed to take a test on the day of quarantine, to take it 14 days later is really challenging for these students, it puts them in an extreme disadvantage, and even some of the changes that you've allowed to either exempt them from things, then they're losing points in their overall, I mean, there's some serious considerations, I know my sixth grader maybe not as much, but when you get to the high schoolers, it becomes a real thing. So I urge you to please think long and hard if there's a way around the testing policies, the duration of the quarantines, and as soon as we have any leeway to get these masks off our children. I mean, we sat here last meeting with no masks, so most of us are on, I think, on the same page with that. And then I just had one question, thought about the equity presentation that was earlier, I mean, some of my questions were addressed or will be addressed. I think that a forum for the public to get clarity and transparency on, on, on the definitions, on how it's going to be implemented, on what's going to be happening this year, on whether our children will be surveyed, on how this is going to fall, I think it would go a long way towards eliminating a lot of the questions that kind of parents have sitting here, and a long way towards starting a really engaging conversation with parents who, of course, want all students in our district to be supported. And I think, I don't think anyone disagrees with that, I think that's always been Summit's mandate, what we've been known for. I think we've struggled with high-achieving students, I think we've struggled with how to, how best to support them, particularly in elementary schools, so I think it's a great place if we want to talk about equity in that ways, we need to look at it across the board, which I think that we do as a district, and we want to. Sorry, I'll be really quick. But if we could have an open discussion about that, I think it starts with transparency, which would be really helpful, and I'd also like to know how this impacts our students directly in terms of, will they be surveyed, will they be asked questions that parents don't know about? I appreciate that the curriculum is online, and you can asked questions that parents don't know about? I appreciate that the curriculum is online and I, you can see it and I study it well, but there were students in our high school that were given a toxic masculinity survey in school. That's not on the curriculum. So, I, as a parent, had no way of knowing that was going to be given to students in our school. And I don't know where that information was then, then went, how that survey went. And I, I think it's troubling when we put something toxic masculinity, we're taking half of our population and putting the word toxic in front of them. I think that's, we have to give some thought to that. These are impressionable students. And so I, I'm hoping that in this discussion about equity and inclusion, that we can provide some real transparency to students and to families and that we can really thoughtfully think about whether a toxic masculinity survey, even if the questions are all great, maybe the way that we're defining it to begin with is hurtful to, is hurtful, but not the right word. But our men, our boys aren't toxic. So, we should never leave anyone with the impression that we as a district, as a board, as parents, as educators, think that half our population is toxic. And I think that probably goes with a lot of surveys that students get. So, I'm just hoping that there can be more transparency than, more than you think we need. And again, I truly appreciate all of your time, all of your questions, allowing me to truffles, all of that. So, thank you very much.
I subliminally granted you extra time. You went back, you went back to something on the agenda, so I I'll just tease. You're fine. You're fine. I appreciate what you have to say. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christine Leck and I just wanted to talk about the district policy for attendance and how it is being utilized in the high school. In the district policy for attendance, it says that all students in grades 11 and 12 are allowed to take up to three days for college visits. And I just wanted to let the district, let all of you know that I was not aware that as parents, that we had to disclose exactly the date and time and send forward an email from the college that we are attending. And I'm, I've, I have discussed this with Mr. Murdoch and he continues to express that we must disclose that information. And I find that to be a security risk to disclose when my house will be not, will be unoccupied, when I will be out of town to be visiting colleges. And I was not aware that this was even a policy. I thought that I just had to tell the school ahead of time that my student was going to be visiting college. So, I just wanted to make the board aware of that and to maybe to stop this policy that parents should not be disclosing. And I'm also concerned because I do have another child in the district. And if it is something that's going to be after-school hours, that my other child in the district may be home alone. And I really don't, I don't post anything on any social media when I'm not in this town. And I don't want anyone in the district having that specific information. I'm not comfortable. And I don't think that parents should have to give out that information at any point. So, I just wanted to disclose what's going on and to hope that this can change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Just a clarification on that point. That, that is a correct me if I'm wrong, that, that policy is a statewide policy for inter-year, incorrect with regards to
The entitlement to the days.
Yeah.
The practice by which the information is given to the school district. We may have some discretion. I don't know sitting here right now. Take a look at that.
But the actual policy of those three days is a state of New Jersey policy that all districts participate in, so.
The exemption of days which are, you know, religious holidays and the like is, is in state code.
So, not, doesn't specifically address your issue. I just wanted to be clear for the public to know that that is actually a state policy for all public schools. Anyone else? Going once. Going twice. Thank you so much. That was a, that was a good round of comments. Appreciate everyone's input. So, we're going to get on with the remainder of the meeting, which is mostly transactional here. We're going to approve some board amendments. So, we need a motion to approve the board minutes from September 9th regular meeting and the September 27th executive session. Can I have a motion?
On the roll, Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack? And President Bonner? Motion carries.
Okay, school board operation A through there's a double letter in here somewhere. A through W? Thank you, sir. Eight, oh, wait, there's an X. Right? No. A through W. Got it. A through W. Can I get a motion?
On the roll, Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack? And President Bonner?
Yes to all with an abstention on F.
Motion carries.
All right. Personnel. Yeah, A through HH. And board members, you'll see in front of you there, the addendum that goes DD to HH. Mr. Martino's on here, right?
Just a quick comment, President Bonner, if you don't mind. Just a quick comment about two notable hires on the personnel section of the agenda. First of all, our new Business Administrator Board Secretary, Mr. Derek Jess, with 21 years of experience will be joining us as of January 1st. And Mr. Michael Martino, internal candidate for Director of Facilities, will be taking the reins as well, January 1st. They will be succeeding two very esteemed people in Lou Pepe and Angelo Palumbo. So, we are very much looking forward to their contributions. We will celebrate them more next month in our November meeting with a reception. Mr. Jess was unable to attend today. He's attending the national conference. We decided to push back the potential circumstances till next month on that. And I'll have more to say
Thank you, sir. Both of those are excellent news for the district. Can I get a motion on Personnel, A through HH?
Don't move.
On the roll, Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack?
Yes, and I mean, there are many, many things. Oh, well, good luck, Rob. You're clearly busy. But I do want to acknowledge Mr. Matty, who is retiring from being the head custodian at Washington. And thank you for setting up those tables in and out of the prize room so quickly every year and for everything else you've ever done. You mean so much for the entire, for all all of the students and families. So, a big thank you. Before you get to your final vote.
And President Bonner?
Indeed. Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on to policies and regulation. We have several policies for first reading and several for second reading. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
On the roll, Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack? And President Bonner? Motion carries.
Right. Last vote of the evening, Finance. A through E. So, the schools can stay in business. Can I get a motion?
On the roll, Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack? And President Bonner?
Yes, indeed.
As Mr. Pepe would say, now we can pay the bills. Motion carries.
All right. We do not have a meeting need for closed session? Hallelujah. Let's get a motion to adjourn this meeting. With double motion?
Who gets that one?
We'll go with, I think I heard Ms. Miller go first, and then we'll go Ms. Primack on the second.
On the roll, Mr. Cho? Ms. Cohen? Mr. Cologne? Ms. Justice? Ms. Miller? Ms. Primack? And President Bonner?
By the use of this gavel, I vote yes.